September 16th. I'm going to call the meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order on this September Item number one. Dean, first of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, the agenda will be read through in the order in which it appears in printed.
Okay. Item number one, approval of the regular minutes of the September 2nd 2008 meeting.
I immediately approve.
Paul Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Seven zero. Item number two. This is a public hearing on application PDD 08-3 filed by Larry Curran requesting amended preliminary and final development plan approval and change in underlying zoning district classification from C2 neighborhood commercial to R2 multiple family residential on a portion of the lots one and two and all of lots three, four, five, and six and a portion of lots seven, eight, and nine, Block 8 Georgetown addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. The requested area is located between Fairdale Road and Georgetown Road north of Crawford Street but does not include track number one, Quick Shop, or track number two, Booker Willis Incorporated, of the Georgetown Village PDD. Companion item, application number P08-5/5A, a proposal replat of a portion of the Block 8 of the Georgetown Edition. Dean, how about a staff report?
It's a whole mouthful, but that's what this planned development district is and we kind of gave you a summary sheet in there, but this whole concept here dates back to the time in 1975, the, what is known as the Georgetown Edition, which is basically that area at the northeast corner of Marymount and Crawford and working your way northeast. Most of that area is today the Georgetown Edition. That was platted and laid out in 1975. And then in 1976, a developer who developed the Georgetown Edition came forward with a plan for a neighborhood shopping center on this block. And the neighborhood center basically extended from Crawford on the south to Village Lane on the north and from east to west, Fairdale to Georgetown. And it covered about 7.7 acres and had 35,000 square feet of commercial space. The, that rezoning at the time was subject of multiple planning commission hearings and multiple action by the city commission. And the result was that an ordinance was adopted that had a very specific list of permitted commercial uses and then it had some fairly strict architectural restrictions that were put in place at the time. And so that final plan for that was approved by the planning commission in 1978. And the first development under that plan was a Quick Shop store that was built in 1979. And from then on, the property remained dormant till about 1993 when a plan was put forward to take the, that north tier where you see the four townhome buildings there and to pull those out of the commercial planned development district and develop townhomes along the south side of Village Lane. At the time, the planning commission encouraged the original 1978 plan. They didn't see that as ever likely to happen, but the owner of the property at the time wanted to hang on to that plan, so it basically remained in place except for the townhome area to the north. And then in 2005, a plan came forward from Booker Willis and Ratliff Corporation to construct their corporate offices there at the corner of Georgetown and Crawford. And so that occupied Track 2, which is in the square there, but these aerial photos were built or were done before that property was built on. And so now what you have before you is an application to take the remainder, which is not townhomes to the north, which is not Quick Shop, and which is not Booker Willis and Ratliff, and to eliminate the commercial zoning except for the piece that fronts on Crawford there. And so what we had was we had two items filed. One was to change the zoning and the plan. The other was to replat or reconfigure that vacant space. And there are some things that need to be resolved first as far as the land use and what exceptions or variations the planning commission feels are appropriate for any townhome development here. And if you, you have your application page labeled Item 2, and then on the backside of that is a listing of the variations that are being requested for this townhome plan in order to make it work. And so the, in an R2 standard townhome district, the minimum lot depth is 100 feet. They are requesting and proposing a depth of 85 feet for the majority of the townhome sites. As a result of that, they're requesting a reduction of the minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet. They're also requesting a reduction on the front side from 25 to 20. And then because of the shallowness of the lots, there are some cases where the townhome footprint would cover more than 35% of the lot. So basically, we, we had a original shopping center plan in 78. In 93, it was modified to carve out an area for 10 townhomes. And now the plan is to wipe out the remainder and substitute townhomes except for that piece along Crawford. And so again, tracks one and two are owned separately. They're not included. And the, this is a planned development district that allows you to modify lot size, setback, density requirements if you think it's warranted by the plan design and it's not inconsistent with the interests of the general public. So we kind of summarized there that you need at least 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. All their sites have more than that because of the width of the lot. So their widths are okay. They're shallow on depth, which affects both the front and the rear yard. And they have some lots where over 39% of the lot would be covered by buildings. So I think the primary driving force here behind the variations would be the fact that the lots are shallower as proposed to have smaller yard areas, smaller depth than what would be in a standard townhome setting. The factors, as we look at the underlying zoning of neighborhood commercial versus townhome zoning, this block has been vacant primarily for 29 years and that, that's an indication that maybe it's overzoned and that this isn't a good place to have a neighborhood shopping center because there's never been any interest expressed in actually having commercial tenants or development there. Certainly, the land itself is suitable for residential development. You've got, and I don't know if you can get back to the aerial photo, John. You see, you have the townhomes to the north. There are townhomes to the west. And then you have townhomes there to the southeast. And they're actually on Village Lane to the east. There are also some, some townhomes or duplexes there. So having duplexes, townhomes, multifamily as a buffer between Crawford and the single family to the north would be a good buffer use. Another question to consider is, is the character of the neighborhood. And again, if you look at the surrounding area, there's a whole lot of townhome and duplex type development nearby. One thing we're to look at also is the availability and adequacy of public utilities and services. If this is approved, will it create traffic congestion? Will it overtax utilities? Will it cause drainage problems, police or fire protection problems? Right now, one of the items that needs to be addressed for action on the plat is that their plan is, is to bring a water line in from the east off of Georgetown Road, bring it in a circle, and bring it back out. And one of the concerns is learning more about the size, square footage of the townhome units and the construction type. And the fire department is concerned about how close together they would be in terms of that may create a need for additional fire flow. And so that, that is being looked at by the applicant's engineer as to what that system would produce. As far as sanitary sewer, there is a sanitary sewer that serves the back of those townhomes to the north, comes down Georgetown and then, and curves back to the east. They will need to extend sewer off of that to serve the individual units. There's no stormwater detention in this area. There's a large storm sewer in Crawford. And most of this area drains by the streets down to Crawford and into storm sewers there. I think you see from the plan in your packet, their idea is you would construct a U-shaped street coming off of Georgetown Road and line it with individual townhomes. There is an item that will be addressed a little bit later, but that deals with the aspect of how do you get to that middle piece, which is proposed Lot 9. And on the original plan, there was a plan for a roadway that was located half on Quick Shop and half on this property that would go around the north side of Quick Shop and provide access to that middle piece, but that, that needs to be addressed in the plan. So if, if we look at the comprehensive plan, this area is actually not shown commercial. When the consultants and planning commission looked at it the last time, they concluded that this area along East Crawford was more suitable for some form of housing than for development as a commercial shopping center. So where we're at at this time is that we think that a public hearing on the proposed change in land use and the proposed or requested variations or exceptions should be addressed by the commission. And if you are comfortable with and endorse the change in land use and you have an opinion about the requested variations, then that, that would be good guidance for the applicants as far as how receptive the commission is. Obviously, if you are not receptive to all those variations, then the actual design layout for the, the townhome development would have to be modified. So the, the plan, the request before you implies all those variances. John, you have the, the floor plan and elevation drawings. One thing we did not have in your packets, but can provide for you here at the meeting is that this, this is a footprint of the proposed typical townhome unit. This is the version where the, the garages are, are separated from one another and the entrances to the living space would be between the garages. They also have a couple, I believe, on the plan layout where the garages are side by side and the entrances on the outside. One of the concerns expressed by utility companies and also by the, the city staff was because we're talking about rear yard utilities for electricity, things like that, and the fact that most townhomes, there's a desire to have decks or patios or things like that, that trying to fit all that within the 15 feet could be a potential for conflicts, but...
This area here, this is the footprint you see on your plan. And the idea is that if there is a covered outdoor space, it would be in this area here, which is within the footprint of the building. And then the 15 feet would start from here back. And so if you had patios here, they would just be concrete patios. They wouldn't have the ability to put roof structures or anything over those. But the, our, the main things that we had identified when we prepared our report was getting a concept for the, the total living area, whether these were multi-level or, or one level. I think also, John, we had elevation drawings, which we did not have at the time that the packet went out, but this is the version where the garages are, are separated. Because of the tightness of the site, particularly the rear yard to rear yard, we, the fire department felt like they needed additional information about fire flows. It was not clear to us what was being proposed in the way of, of decks or patios. And that, that's been addressed. Then the other item is that for the planning commission's benefit and considering what happens to the piece between Booker Willis, Ratliff, and Quick Shop, at this point, there's, there's no building footprint shown as part of the planned development district, no list of intended uses or elevations for what a, a commercial building might look like there. And then what the primary means of access for customers and employees or the public to get to that centerpiece has not been clearly established. And so we have had a series of replats and planned development district amendments. We've got, you can create building tracks with a planned development district that can overlay a plat, and that's what occurred here. So we, we do have a bit of a jigsaw puzzle. But our recommendation is that you take public comment on the proposal to go from town to townhome use from commercial, but, and that you provide some feedback on whether you support the zoning change and the reductions or variations that are being requested. And then the thing that we feel like needs to be clarified is, again, we have existing planned development district zoning and a list of uses for that middle piece between Quick Shop and VWR. And the question we have is whether that simply would remain in, in place with that list of uses for that middle piece or whether we're proposing a different list or a broader list. Then the planning commission would need to know that at, at this meeting and have discussion on that. But the, the, there's an attached ordinance there that has a list of 13 uses that are approved. And self-service gasoline stations was, was one of them. And of course, offices, another. But the, the question on the commercial side, if that is a commercial tract, what are the uses that should be permitted in that, that middle piece? And then I think the, the final item would be that it, customarily, the, there's a requirement for a, a screening, which could be a solid wood fence or it could be a, a thick vegetative hedge. But that is done between commercial and residential tracks, and it's usually done when a commercial tract develops. But in, in this case, there, if there is commercial development along Crawford and residential to the north, the question is, is there a screen or buffer or hedge or something proposed between the three tracks on Crawford and the townhomes to the north? So I think with that, we would address any questions that you have about the material in your, your packet. But I, we think that the focus should be on, on the, the merits of, of changing the land use from commercial to townhomes and then focusing on the, the reductions or variations that are being requested to make this plan work.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff?
Dean, are you saying that, that center commercial lot there would not be accessible off of Crawford? It'd have to have an alternate access to it? There is restricted access on that whole block. So Quick Shop and Booker Willis Ratliff have their access off of Fairdale and Georgetown. So there wouldn't be the ability to have a curb cut there for the middle piece and the way, I don't know if you, do you have the, the original plan there, John?
Because none of the, none of these tracks here can have a driveway on Crawford. The idea was, unless this is Quick Shop here, that there would be a road here that basically straddled that property line and it would provide the access into the site. And so there, there is also a possibility that's not as desirable. And we'll have to check if there are actual easements to that effect, but of connection here between the Quick Shop lot and the future parking here. But the idea was that the primary access to this middle piece would be here. And that's, that's not clearly...
Established on the townhome plan as far as showing that and how it would impact the plan.
But was that included in the Quick Trip plat or lot? Or is that...
Yes, if you drive by there, the curb cut's actually already there. And it's, it's set up, part of the driveway's on Quick Shop property and part of it's on the track to the north.
At the current time?
Yes.
Okay.
But that, one of the, when we sent out our letters of notification, one of the comments we got back was from the owners of the Quick Shop wanting to know how the access to the middle tract was going to be finalized. And so that, that is an important item.
Is important. Any questions? We'd like to hear from the applicant. Please state your name and give us your address.
Kelly Dunn, 25, 24, Berwick Circle, Salina. I represent Georgetown Villas and Larry Curran. First of all, I'd like to thank Dean and the staff for all their preparation on this and the planning commission for hearing our proposal. Couple things I just wanted to, wanted to go over is, is the conditions that we're asking for, the exceptions and the variations. I don't believe that we're asking for anything that isn't already part of the neighborhood up there. Don, could you bring up the aerial photo, please? The townhomes to the north of this property there on, the ones that are on Village Lane, I believe they just have a 10-yard rear setback. I was up there and measured that. I'm not sure what the plat shows on it and I'm not sure what the depth of the lots are. But they are 10 foot from the property line and we're asking for 15 foot, so we're within what's already in the area there. And as far as the, the front yard setback, I'm sorry, I can't see. The 20-foot, I believe there's some 20-foot setbacks up there too in the, in the townhomes across the street there of Georgetown. If you look at those, I drove, we've drove through there and there's some shorter setbacks than 25 foot. So I don't believe we're asking for anything that's really not in place up there. And like Dean said, on the, on the driveway issue behind Quick Shop, it is already in place there and I, we would, we would be able to put that on the plat, however the city would like it.
What kind of right-of-way would we be required for that access street, Dean? Would that be us?
You're talking about the one coming from the Fairdale?
Right.
Well, if, since it's going to be a private access easement, the, the width of the easement would probably be about equal to the paving width. So I think we'd probably be looking at anywhere from 25 feet to 30 feet of, of width, but you wouldn't have any right-of-way in addition to that. You basically put the pavement within an easement. And so if you had a 30-foot easement, you'd have 30-foot of paving.
Now, would that be a city street?
No, that would be a privately maintained driveway. Yeah, shared driveway.
And is that taken into, into consideration for those lots that abut that drive are very deep? So that doesn't change any of those calculations with that 30 feet?
I think you'd have to go back to that site plan, John, the proposed site plan.
Talking about a roadway that's going to straddle this property lines. So it's going to come in like this and then provide access down. So if it, if it made that turn there, then it's going to occupy some of this area back here. So the only impacts would be right in this area, but that, these are, that's a very deep setback there.
So would you anticipate that would be another variance at that Lot 5 that would be necessary?
It wouldn't necessarily change the property lines or anything. It would just be creating, showing that as an access easement and a roadway on, on those properties.
If you do drive up there, the drive, there's a driveway already put in behind Quick Shop there and the, and the property, we surveyed it and the property pin is right in the middle of the driveway. So there's already driveways started to go behind the Quick Shop there. I think it would just have to be added on to, to access that lot.
If it was 30 feet wide, it would be 15 feet on the Quick Shop side and 15 feet on, on this side.
So when you figure the setback then is from the property line and not from any roadway?
Right, we measure from the, the property line.
Is Quick Shop not interested in allowing him to come through their parking lot, work out an arrangement or anything? I mean, if you...
I believe there's an easement there, a shared easement already there.
Yeah, that would, that might negate if there's any easement there.
I believe, I believe there's a, a shared easement that goes in front too through the Quick Shop parking lot. I, I just talked to the survey and he had mentioned that he thought the front had a platted easement to access that lot also, but like Dean said, that really wouldn't be the ideal thing. It would be to go behind the property and access it from the rear.
Who's the owner of Lot 9?
This, this property right now is owned by three parties, which each have a one-third interest. Mr. Curran is a contract purchaser of the property.
But not, your purchase contract does not include Lot 9?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. Does that kind of access make Lot 9 a viable lot?
I believe so. Quick Shop doesn't have access from Crawford and Booker Willis and Ratliff doesn't have Quick Shop or access from Crawford, so you're kind of along the same lines of access to that, to that lot also.
If you're looking for a comparable situation, if you're driving down South Ohio, you have Stat Care and then you have Dr. Johnson's Dental Office and then you have a chiropractic office. And the dental office is in the middle. There are no driveways on Ohio. To get to the dental office, you either have to go across Stat Care or across the chiropractic office to get there. And that's an example of a shared access easement. It has frontage on Ohio, it just doesn't have a driveway. This has frontage on Ohio, it just doesn't have a individual driveway.
And I believe the Booker Willis building is accessed from the rear also. It's... It's on Georgetown, but you access the parking lot on the rear of the building, not the front or the side.
Would you put up that chart of variances and exceptions? There were four of them. You've addressed two. What about the other two? You addressed minimum front yard and rear yard because you said that that was the...there were examples of that in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's why I wasn't sure of the lot size of the townhomes that are on Village Lane.
The coverage, the lot.
The depth of the lots to the north are 105 feet.
Which means what?
Which means that the depth proposed here is 85 feet and those lots there are 105 feet deep. But the townhomes up there are very deep. So they do have a reduced rear yard setback there. The other thing that Mr. Dunn's referring to is what makes this different here is that this is a private street and that these people don't have lots. They basically just own the unit and this is all common area that's owned in common. But he is correct that some of these distances from here to property line here are in the neighborhood of 15 feet and in some cases, less. They're just sitting at angles.
So because of the type of that development, it was not a variance?
It was...basically, it was from the standpoint that the difference here is that what is being proposed is to plat individual lots and people could potentially purchase...the difference being that if you're across the street and you get a deed to purchase the property, you are buying a townhome unit. You're getting the unit and the driveway and everything else, the street, the yards, everything is common area owned by an association. What is being proposed here is to plat individual building lots. And so the difference is that there's not really a lot that goes with the townhomes on the east side, but they're proposing to plat lots. So if you look at an R2 district, the minimum depth for a lot is 100 feet. They're proposing 85. And the minimum rear yard setback is 25 and they're proposing 15. And that's pretty proportional that if you have shallower lots, you're going to have shallower setbacks.
What about the lot coverage? Is that not unusual in that area?
I don't think...of the four items, that's probably the least unusual. There are some uses you can put in R2 that are conditional, like the Sterling House across the way where their lot coverage is in the neighborhood of 40%. And so anything that's 40% or under is still within the ballpark of typical residential. I mean, we...in some of the older parts of the community where we have small lots, it's not unusual at all to have 40% lot coverage with your dwelling.
And the...excuse me. One reason we tossed that idea around too, but we wanted to stay away from a homeowner's situation like Dean explained. We just felt like this would be a better fit for that and just in the case that, you know, in the future, the lots could be sold separately and each person would own a lot instead of just a townhome.
So what would be your solution if we did not grant the variances to the front yard and backyard setbacks?
Well, this is about the smallest townhome plan we can come up with. We really was trying to stick around 14, 1500 square feet in the beginning. But to make everything fit there, we had to downsize. And I believe I have...I know Dean didn't get these in time, but I do have some plans here.
I understand the size of the townhomes, but what about the number of townhomes?
I don't believe taking some townhomes out would get you any more square footage on the townhomes or give you any more setbacks.
You'd have to reconfigure the access, the streets to bring those, perhaps eliminate the middle four.
Yeah, there'd be three lots in the middle. And one of the things is the economical standpoint too. You know, land is so expensive these days, you kind of want to get as many units as you can on the property.
I understand that part.
And then you would end up with rather large lots. And the community we're kind of target here is maybe more retired people. And I'm sure they would probably want less yard to take care of or, you know, less green space would be better than a lot of green space.
To me, the setback issue, it's not an issue because first off, it's bordered by streets on two sides, commercial property on the south. The only other neighbor you're going to have to is to the north. Be close to that, but other than that, the rear setback's nothing. And it would be nice to see that finally get filled in.
And that's one thing we are going to do too. We're not trying to replat this just to make it more or a better piece of property. I mean, we want to get started doing it as soon as possible.
Will you do fencing for each house?
We really haven't discussed that. I believe there'll probably be...it'll be a fenced area. We've discussed several options, you know, maybe put a, you know, a semi-gated area look in the front of it for the access on Georgetown. Not really a gated community, but maybe put some pillars and some gates in the front there so it'd be, you know, kind of sectioned off as an area altogether.
What do you intend to do for the buffering between the commercial and the residential portions?
That's another thing we haven't discussed. I would say, as she mentioned, probably fencing and some shrubbery or trees. Like the townhomes to the north, they have extensive trees along that with the fence. And I think that goes pretty good with that area up there.
What about covered decks?
Well, the covered decks, if you look at the plans, it's incorporated into the footprint. So that wouldn't be intrusion into the easement there.
And this is single-story?
Single-story. Yeah, we're still contemplating if we want to put basements or put them on slabs at this point.
I'm kind of like Mike. I've walked that area over there and the townhomes to the north, it seems like the setbacks are very close on there. But it doesn't look out of proportion for the lot size or the building size.
And them townhomes up there, I believe they, you know, they stay full all the time and people like them. Like I said, I went up there and measured, they're only 10-foot off the property line. And, you know, we're five-foot more than that. So it's...we're asking for actually less than what's already there.
What do you project the selling price of these to be?
I believe the applicant, he's wanting to retain ownership of all of them at this point, but I would guess low under 200 per side.
Does that mean that they're going to be rental units then? Is that...
That's what we're thinking at this point.
But these are townhomes, not duplexes?
Yes.
So they will have a firewall?
Yes.
You can sell individual lots with the unit on it?
That's the typical construction we'll use as townhomes with the, I believe it's a four-hour fire rating wall in between the units.
Well, I guess the reason I'm...as you know, I'm almost never for a variance.
I'm not either.
But the density as it abuts the commercial, I mean, I can see going from the R1 and then into the duplex and, I mean, it just is getting more dense as it approaches the commercial and Crawford. And so for me, I can make it make a little more sense in my mind.
Well, actually, we're not really asking for anything more than what's already in place there because it's, you know, C2 is actually in place where we're going to put R2. And it butts up to R2 already. So we're just moving it to the south a little bit is actually what we're trying to do.
Where do people like to have their yard? Seems to me that I'd want to give you more space in back and less in front. In other words, the...
Shorten the driveway?
In other words, shorten the driveway, set it closer to the streets so you have more space in back.
Well, I think we're asking for a 20-foot front yard setback already. So I don't think they want to shorten that to a 15-yard.
Yeah, I can address that. We would be responsible for that from the standpoint that the minimum depth of a parking space is 19 feet. So if you shorten, if you have garages facing the street and you shorten a setback to less than 20 and you have cars parked in the driveway, then the cars are going to be out in the street. And so the...
Street or sidewalk?
Well, it could be either, but you'll be in the right-of-way.
Yeah. Will this street have sidewalks?
As a short loop street, it would not be a requirement. But again, that's a Planning Commission discretion item that the options would be no sidewalks because it's a short loop street or sidewalks on one side or sidewalks on both sides. But that would be subject to your...what we're talking about here is a 50-foot right-of-way for the streets and 29 feet of paving. So you're having about 10 and 1/2 feet behind the curb to where the property line is. On the surrounding streets like Fairdale, Georgetown, you've got 60 feet of right-of-way and 33 feet of paving. So you've got 13 and 1/2 feet from curb to property line. So when you incorporate sidewalks into the narrower right-of-way, it just means that your green space within the right-of-way is less. You've got 10 and 1/2 feet to work with instead of 13 and 1/2.
And a typical sidewalk is four-foot?
Yes, if it's a property line sidewalk.
So we have 6 and 1/2 feet of green space between the sidewalk and...
Yeah, roughly, uh-huh.
Wow. How short is the...what would make this require sidewalks? How short are we from that dividing line here? You said it's a short loop, so what would make it...
Well, it's basically functioning as a cul-de-sac, but our number is 600 feet of depth.
And this is...
It's probably on the order of 400 some feet east-west and then you've got a north-south leg and 400 feet back. So you're looking at somewhat in the neighborhood of 1,000 feet of actual street, but 400 feet coming off of Georgetown. And so the rule of thumb on a cul-de-sac where sidewalks would not be required is from 0 to 600 feet in length. This street is actually going to have...the total pavement is going to be over 1,000 feet by the time you put all the three legs in. So again, that is a...because this is being replatted and it's a new street, you would have the discretion as to whether you've got sidewalks on both sides, one side or not at all. It's always a little more challenging when you've got the 50-foot of right-of-way and 29 feet of paving than it is with the 33 and 60. And so we've had that discussion and we've seen it both ways. But the river-run area up off of South Marymount Road, they've got 29-foot streets and 50-foot right-aways and sidewalks on one side, not both. So...
Personally, I think, you know, given the nature of the rest of that area, I think sidewalks would be very fitting in there. And I think the other thing that goes along with that is what the comprehensive plan people have told us. The public wants sidewalks and obviously the price of fuel and bicycles and other modes of transportation becoming more, you know, prevalent, I think that that's something that we have to look at here.
And the...whether a subdivision has sidewalks is a function of when it was platted. I don't know if you go back to the aerial photo, John, but the Georgetown addition is a '70s subdivision. So if you drive up and down those streets, you will see no sidewalks. Because at the time that the Georgetown addition was done, sidewalks were not required. Any subdivision that's been developed since 1980, sidewalks are required. So most of the 1970s subdivisions in Salina do not have any sidewalks.
Hypothetically, if we put a sidewalk around the inside portion of that thing, that would be the least distance for the developer. And could that be, from your aspect, Dean, is that something that's doable?
I think that can be done without really making things too tight. Some of it's a function of utilities and where they go. One reason where you look at sidewalks on one side in the 50-foot right-of-way situations is you've got places you've got to put utilities and only so much room. So it would seem to us that putting sidewalks either on the outside ring or requiring it on one side to be on the inside ring would be something that would work here.
I think I would actually disagree with sidewalks in this area. I understand what you're saying about the people wanting to ride bikes and walking, but this being kind of a closed loop like that, I don't get the same feeling. We've already got pretty narrow setbacks. I mean, that's the issue we're really discussing here. I think to add four-foot of sidewalk anywhere is really going to tighten that down. I don't think this is going to be a high-traffic area. I think people walking on the streets and, you know, unless it's required. I kind of think when that 600-foot rule was put in place, I think maybe...I don't know that...were they thinking maybe that whole loop length? I just feel like only being 400-foot back, I think it's maybe an unnecessary expense and I think it's maybe...I just think it's going to make it look really crowded in there, especially in that center section. Man, if you look at that one that's backed up to the street, that's going to be a teeny tiny little backyard. I mean, take one swap with your mower and you'll have her done. And I mean, it's going to be older people and you might think, okay, sidewalks, but...
Well, I think we may also want to get a chance for our experts on street construction and utility construction and sidewalk construction to weigh in, Mr. Stack or Mr. Nelson, about looking at this layout and how you think the most feasible way to accommodate sidewalks into it, thinking that not to have curbside sidewalks, but to be looking at property line-type sidewalks within that 50-foot right-of-way. So if you guys had any thoughts about where that would be located without conflicting with utilities and how it would fit in with the street design?
Well, connectivity, walkable communities, that's something the comprehensive plan is definitely looking to encourage in this area. But like, the point is well-taken. It's a short street, it's going to be a low-volume street. So it's definitely worth looking at whether a sidewalk would be necessary and whether people really mind walking in a cul-de-sac street which doesn't have a lot of traffic. You just think, well, you could walk in the street. But engineering just doesn't...we haven't... We haven't any more to say about that, Wayne, other than we'd like it to be connected in some way. But you have to look at the overall sidewalk system there too and try and start somewhere and this could be a place to start.
I think if we look at the sidewalk being on the interior circle, one of the items we would consider is, of course, that the proposed sanitary sewer extension runs up the north side of the street, on the north side of the south leg of that street and then on up on the east side as it goes northeast. So we would have some potential conflicts there with manhole placement in the...potentially into the sidewalks. Typically, our property line sidewalks are set one foot off of the property line. So we would then have five feet from the edge of the property line to the edge of the sidewalk. So we're at that 10 feet that we're talking about from back of curb to the property line or the right-of-way is getting filled up pretty quickly with sanitary sewer and sidewalk.
And where's the water line going to be in that area?
The water line is going to be on the opposite side of the street.
Opposite side, okay. Opposite side, okay.
We would probably request that we would not be required to put sidewalks in the area up there just for the tightness of the, of the area and the conformity for the rest of the neighborhood. There's no sidewalks in, I believe, any of the neighborhood around that area.
But that doesn't mean that there won't be sidewalks.
There, and there could be, and, and I was going to suggest maybe, uh, maybe put a sidewalk along Georgetown. Um, we're, you know, this is kind of a closed-loop area, um, we're kind of keeping it a little bit private, uh, that way, you know, we can have a sidewalk out front on Georgetown, people could walk down that sidewalk, but maybe not, uh, leave it open to everybody to come walk through there.
Yeah, that would seem reasonable to me, that if, you know, we're talking about a potential place to start a sidewalk, but to where? You know, I mean, really, is that whole area going to, one day decide they're going to build a bunch of sidewalks? I don't see that happening anytime soon. There's street after street after street with no sidewalk, and then you have this one section of sidewalk up here, I think that'll look goofier than anything, but, you know, if it'll satisfy somebody for you guys to put the sidewalk there, you know, give them eighty feet of sidewalk or however wide, two-hundred-foot of sidewalk and-
But he's right, it's going to start nowhere and end nowhere, because there's nothing else to add on to.
Yeah, that's kind of my feeling, too, and I agree, down the road, but shoot, down the road, who knows? If we built everything for down the road, we'd-
Well, but the city does have a sidewalk program where every year they add sidewalks.
Yeah, we've added one on Crawford, not too far away from here, so it's-
Right, yeah.
That's the connection that we're looking at, really.
There's one all along Crawford, right?
Yeah, and it's used a lot.
Yep, it's very well-used, and it keeps extending, and it's going to keep extending in the future.
Oh, that's, I could see that as Crawford, but I, uh, looks like since about the nineteen-seventies, nobody up here's taken advantage of it, so, you know, I could see maybe requiring to put it on Georgetown, but I, I would kind of agree, too, if you even talk about somewhat of a gated community inviting the public to sort of walk into what you're purposely saying up as a little bit of a private area, seems a little bit-
Why would you say that, if these are rental units and they're fourteen-hundred square feet, you thought maybe-
About twelve-hundred square feet.
Oh, twelve-hundred. Why would you say that you think it's going to be for retired, that that's what it's going to-
I think that's what we're going to target as, as far as, uh-
You won't turn down others?
I don't believe so.
I, I'm not sure why you would assume that that would, I could see singles, I could see young married couples, I, I mean, I could see lots of not, so I don't, I wouldn't say that we need to be thinking about a specific age group that's going to be in this area, because I'm not sure why that necessarily would-
And, you know, that's something that, that could be determined down the road, too, because I believe you can have covenants that restrict, you know-
Sure.
-who can be rented to and what, and things like that, so-
Actually, I think you can for older, for retirement communities.
Yeah, and if that's something the owner decides they want to do, then I believe they can do it, if they would like to limit it to fifty, fifty and older people or whatever, you know, I think that can be done.
I think since the focus today is on the land use and the, uh, the reductions being requested, the replat or final plat is going to come up as a future action item, and I think what we would do with that is, is frame the sidewalk issue for you and then lay out your options on that, and so we can do a little better staff work on that, but it, this is a, one of those, um, gray areas where there's not a specific exemption, but it, it functions as a, as a cul, a cul-de-sac street, it just doesn't have a turnaround at one end, it's, it's got two legs to the cul-de-sac, so that is an area where the planning commission has, you have the discretion as far as the, the sidewalk plan. But the, uh, that will come back to you on, on the actual plat layout, um, so your, your direction today would be is, is the land use townhomes appropriate in this location, and then are the exceptions being requested appropriate as well?
In order to move along, Mr. Dunn, I'm going to excuse you for just a minute.
Okay.
Hang around, but this is a public hearing, and therefore we would like to hear from those in the, uh, audience, the public-
Thank you.
Whether you have any comments, both positive or negative, because we're trying to, one of the things we want to determine is this residential development appropriate in this area, that's one of our key decisions. Anyone from the public here to speak? Jerry?
Yeah, up here?
Yeah, please. Your name and address, please?
My name is, my name is Jerry Dick, I am president of Georgetown Village Town Home, and, uh-
Where do you live?
Six seventy-seven Georgetown.
Okay.
It's in the townhome area.
Is that to the east of this area?
That is to the east side of Booker Willis, and, uh, I'm concerned possibly about traffic flow, only entrance and exit on the Georgetown Road area. It, there could be a traffic flow problem at certain times of the day. Um, also, I'm concerned about the property being rental, um, how, what kind of control would be as to people who rent it, and then also, will these streets be maintained by the townhome owners, or will it be maintained by the city? I'm not against it, I, I'm pleased to see the lot being used for something. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
I'm Ruth LaRue, I'm one of the Village Lane homeowners. Uh, I think this is an appropriate use of the land, I certainly have no objections to it, even the exceptions are asking, seem in line. Uh, I would like to know a little more about the traffic he was referencing, if all of this feeds in and out through Georgetown, I don't know if that causes a problem or not. I assume the city can assess what kind of traffic that would be, but I think it is a good use, and I have no problem with rezoning it to that.
How many townhomes, what do we have here?
Fifteen. Fifteen buildings, which would be thirty living units.
Thirty living units, okay.
Yes.
Each one had two cars, that's sixty people.
Plus the kids, couple of teenagers.
No, these are retired people.
Not on, not on, not living on social security for two-hundred-thousand bucks a side, and got to be about-
Okay, we have a, uh-
Wow.
I'm Darlene Harris, and I'm also one of the owners of the townhomes north of this property. Um, one of the things I'm concerned about, it seems that we're putting in a lot of townhomes in a, in what I see as a relatively small area. Now, you're talking about, did, did I understand this, twelve-hundred square feet for each of these townhomes? Approximately. Um, it seems to me like we're putting in a lot of townhomes in there, and, uh, I am also concerned about the fact that I don't think they should be allowed to be rentals. I deal with some of that across the street for me on Village Lane, and, uh, that can be a problem sometimes. Um, I'm also wondering about the, um, the access problem, and also if there's room for fire trucks and other personnel in there, since having just dealt with the Kansas Westland situation out there with the round, uh, circle, um, they're having to make a lot of changes because of that, uh, problem, and so, you know, if it's crowded in there, well, I, maybe I'm visualizing a little differently than I should be. Um, how far from the fence that we have north of our units back there, how far would those units be from me?
You mean to the south?
To the south, yeah, where would they start building those? Because, let me tell you this, when we bought that unit, we were told that Pheasant Lane was going to be extended across there at some point. So now I'm wondering, um, not that it has a whole lot to do with that, but how far would those buildings be built?
From the fence line-
That ugly fence that we have, which needs to be covered up, there's no doubt about it, but I'm just wondering how far from that fence.
They would be fifteen, they're proposing that to be fifteen feet south of the fence line.
Fifteen feet, which, I don't know how, is that pretty standard? I don't know.
No, that's twenty.
Well, that's one of the various-
It seems close.
Variances that's being requested to, uh, reduce that to fifteen feet from-
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Mm-hmm. So you're going to be ten feet closer than-
Ten feet closer, that's the way I'm seeing it, too.
What kind of rear, uh, setback do you ha, do you have?
There's a variance with their rear yard setback.
Ten feet, I think it's ten feet.
Ten or fifteen?
I mean, I would measure their tented building.
Yeah.
The fence, or from the house, or the back of the house, it's probably, that's ten feet.
So that's what, twenty feet less than what it would be if nobody had a-
Sure.
So if these are fifteen feet and hers is ten, there'd be a total of twenty-five between buildings.
Twenty-five feet? Oh, yeah, I just meant the difference between, yeah.
I mean, I'm just wondering, would I be looking into somebody else's windows?
See, yeah.
Or would they be looking in the line?
Well, at least the master bedroom, yeah.
Master bathroom.
Yeah, not the shed.
And bedroom.
One thing good about the north side, there, there is a lot of, a lot of big trees that are already, a lot of, a lot of, up from there already.
Well, there are some.
Yeah.
There are some there, yeah.
Is there a fence on that line currently?
Mm-hmm.
Whose fence is that?
I believe it belongs to the town.
It belongs to the Town Home Association.
It's property on their own, so.
Um, yeah, well, yes, we each have a part of that, but, um, anyway, those are just some concerns that I was thinking about.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we know about, uh, fire and all of that, we know that it meets-
Yeah, their, their concern had to do with the, getting additional information about the total living area that, and type of construction. Their concern was not about access, it was about what amount of, of fire flow would be generated by the, the water lines, but the, uh, the twenty-nine-foot street is, is pretty standard, there, there's no variation being requested there from what we would have in other areas, so it's, it's more a function of the closeness of the buildings to the, uh, street than it is the, the narrowness of the street itself.
And that will be a city street?
It'll be a publicly owned and maintained city street.
I have a question for our engineering staff, uh, in your opinion, just, I know you haven't had time to study this too much, but, uh, do these thirty units, or, I'm sorry, fifteen units pose any problem from a traffic standpoint?
Thirty units?
Thirty units.
Fifteen lots, thirty units.
Yeah, fifteen lots, thirty units, yes.
Yeah, we don't see any reason to assume, based on the percentage of, the Georgetown and Fairdale percentage of houses that are in that area, it doesn't seem to be an, an added percentage-wise huge impact to the street that's currently there.
Anyone else in the, uh, from the public? Positive or negative? Want to hear your concerns?
Well, let's, should we look at maybe some of, some of the issues that they've, they've brought up?
Yeah.
Should we discuss some of those? I, I mean, I would just want to say, always, I appreciate, uh, any time the public comes out and speaks, that's exactly, uh, this is your politics at work, so, uh, I think they voice some good concerns. I, too, am a little concerned about them being rental units, I, um, there are already some on Village Lane, but I, I, I think we kind of, maybe negate that a little bit, these are going to be pretty expensive units, I, yeah, the rent's going to be roughly, what, per month? Fifteen-hundred, eighteen-hundred? I mean, expensive.
Fifteen.
Fifteen-hundred, so we're not, not, you know, I don't think we're going to have your average starting-out teenage family, that is a concern of mine, too, and I could definitely understand where, uh, that would be a concern to some people, I would, I would much rather see these as owned units, but that's maybe for you all to decide as well. Um, I think as far as the setbacks go, that you were discussing the ten-foot on yours, I think it's only fair that if, at some point, the city gave you a, a variance for the people to build the ten-foot, and they're still asking for fifteen, I mean, in a way, they're five-foot better than what your developer gave you, I, I think it would be unfair for us to say that, hey, we don't want them to get fifteen because my developer built too far back. As far as somebody telling you that Pheasant Lane was going to go through, um, as a real estate agent, I think this will be the second time, I always apologize, never trust anyone who says this is the way it's going to be, I'd be happy to put you in touch with, uh, with lawyers who can sue real estate agents who make promises that they can't keep, we need less real estate agents, so, um, I am sorry that, that they did tell you that it would, would be through, that is a very common practice in my business, um, so I, I know I didn't address all your issues, but maybe a couple of the issues, it is going to be a higher, higher-end rental, I don't think we're going to have just anybody off the street moving in out here, um, I hope that maybe makes you feel a little more secure there. Um, the traffic flow, it's really no different than if we had just made a straight street there, we'd probably have about that many, I mean, how many units would we fit on there? We could probably, if we did both sides of the street with a straight, couple of streets there, we'd probably have a similar count of, of houses there, so I can't imagine the traffic flows really would be much, much different than if it were just developed with three straight streets. I mean, does that look about right?
That's one reason we didn't want to do the Pheasant Lane, because we figured that was a, it could be a through affair through the street.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, maybe slow traffic down a little bit, too, so, I mean, did that maybe address some of the issues, or there some others that we?
There was one other thing I was going to mention, what's going to be the, uh, what kind of siding?
You have to come to the microphone.
Oh.
She's waving her hand at us.
Uh, what kind of siding? Are they going to be like, we have that, it's not called stucco exactly, there's another word for it, or is it going to be, are they going to be brick, or are they going to be like a-
Well, we actually designed ours off of your units.
I noticed that.
We had to make them a little bit smaller, but we are shooting for probably putting drive-it on, on, on the-
Yeah, drive-it, that's, that's the word I was trying to think of.
So a similar look?
I have one more question for you, ma'am.
Darlene Harris.
Mrs. Harris, uh, I, I don't remember if I caught, in, in theory, though, in the change to a residential, you are in favor of that?
Oh, that's fine with me. I, I was a little concerned, maybe, maybe they would be two-story, I wasn't sure about that. I used to say, I kind of live across the golf course, with Dennis Booker and Willis team, and, and shot us out of that, so, anyway, just talking.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Would just note for comparison purposes, not, not counting the garage, that the townhomes to the north have fourteen-hundred-and-forty square feet of living area per side.
Well, I'm with you guys, I think it's great that somebody's finally doing something, so, yeah.
Well, we keep talking about infill instead of-
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think what we're looking for today is kind of guidance for the developer, and, you know, the two issues that, uh, Dean mentioned, first of all, are we generally in favor of residential development as opposed to commercial development, and I think, I kind of feel we are in favor of residential development here as opposed to the, uh, even commercial that might be proposed. Uh, so maybe-
Do, do we need a motion on that? I mean-
Doesn't have to be a formal motion, because we're not, you're not taking a formal action on the actual development plan here, but I think it's important both for the interested public and for the applicants to know that you are favorable towards the change in land use, and then how you feel about the reductions being requested. I just, Dustin was doing a little research here for us, and the, uh, what occurred, um, on the north was that they got a setback reduction to go to ten feet for rear yard, and also a variance to allow the units to cover forty-one percent of the lots, so, uh, that, that's in the neighborhood here where we're talking thirty-nine percent, and, uh, the ten-foot is actually less than the fifteen proposed here.
Before Mr. Funk and I were on the planning commission, by.
Yeah. Are the, are the units, uh, Mrs. Harris, the units to the north, are they all privately owned?
Yes.
Okay. I would see a market for privately owned here as opposed to rental, I, I mean-
Is that our shorts, though?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have the focus.
I think they see a, I think they see a windfall, yeah, I think, yeah, yeah.
Do you have a contract?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think you'll probably make a lot more money if you can keep them rented for twenty years, you'll own a few million dollars worth of houses.
Yeah, I think the important thing from our standpoint is that the, this, this is being set up so that each of the units could be sold individually with a yard that goes with them, and how, whether they sell them all, or rent some of them, or rent all of them, is not, not really material to how they're built, or, or the, the property that goes with them, so the way this is being laid out and set up, it's being set up so that ultimately each of the thirty units could be sold to individuals.
And that's the way it should be, I'd, I'd have a hard time any other way. Okay, so I think we're basically agreed on residential. Now, how about the variations that are being requested? How do you feel about that? I guess I have problems with it, but I don't know- requested? How do you feel about that? I guess I have problems with it, but I don't know what else, what to do about it. Is there any other way you could get that street through there? Do they get too big then or?
Tried everything, you know, if we, uh, if we, if we just.
Why don't you come to the mic?
Yeah, we tried several different options. We actually tried to use, uh, the, the footprint of, of the townhomes that are to the north in there, but nothing really worked out real feasible. I mean, if we, if we went through a street, then we, then we ended up with, if we just went one street through the middle, then we end up with, with townhomes with nothing on the backyard of them. And that's, that was not very feasible as far as putting streets in. And, um, this is just really the best plan we could come up with. And like I say, actually, we would have rather had fourteen to fifteen hundred square foot townhomes in there. But, you know, we, we come up with the footprint and we're able to get twelve hundred and we fill it, you know, with the ba-, you know, putting basements in, you know, somebody could have a two thousand square foot home or, or a little better. We, we, you know, we just messed with it for a long time with the engineers and, and this is the best footprint we could come up with as far as land use goes and, and size of the townhomes.
If you're looking for.
I think the one item that we haven't addressed that we need to address before the zoning, and it, it's just to clarify again, not for formal action, is whether the, the commercial planned development district in that list of uses that's there, whether that, that stands in place or whether we're looking at, at a uses other than what is already approved in, in that list that's in your packet. And again, the, uh, the, the list of approved uses for the commercial lots here are apparel stores, banks, barber and beauty shops, business and professional offices, dry cleaning, food stores, gasoline, self-service, gift variety and floor shops, hardware shops, packaged liquor stores, pharmacies, restaurants, and photography studios. Those are the thirteen, um, permitted uses that are under the current commercial zoning designation. And so that's really the question is whether the, all those restrictions that are in place on the tract along Crawford today, whether those stay in place or whether we are, whether that is being requested to be modified.
And we don't have a problem with any of the, of the uses that are, that are being permitted. We'd be fine with that.
Do you, and would you anticipate a problem with that, Dean?
Well, it's only from the standpoint that if, if the piece on Crawford, that, that, if those conditions and list of uses stays the same, we're not changing the zoning on Crawford. We're leaving it intact. If, if there are proposals to add uses or things that are different than what's on that list, then technically we're rezoning or you're, you're being asked to make a recommendation to rezone that as well. So if it's somewhat more of a concern for us who would have to draft an ordinance, but the, the question is what piece of this are we actually rezoning? We're leaving the zoning in place on the piece on Crawford, the lot nine, you're being requested to approve a change in land use on the rest from C-two to R-two. So I, that's just to clarify, it's important to know what we're changing the zoning on. So we can, it's important for people to know what the uses are that are already permitted there. And then if those are, work for everybody, then, then those would remain in place. So.
Yeah, I would think if the applicant doesn't care, we shouldn't, yeah, we shouldn't care. Um, I was going to just point out too, I, I know you guys feel a little uneasy about variances and I, and I would, I would tend to agree with you, but like we are always saying, infill is good, but infill is always going to be difficult no matter what. These are always unique lots. There's a reason that they've sat empty for these thirty years. Looking at, at what they've, they've done a little research on their townhouses, houses over there, and these are actually less intrusive on the lots than the ones that are already up there. So maybe it's, maybe you could, you could still feel like it's a victory for your, uh, keeping Salina clean, uh, approach, that maybe it's a little bit less. But like I said, it, it's always difficult when I think a developer takes on these infill areas because there's no right or easy way to do it. So I think we should err on the side of maybe being a little more forgiving in some of our, our ordinances and, and setbacks and things, uh, just simply because I, I think everybody involved would love to see something up there. Let's not make it hard for them.
Okay, I've got one opinion.
I, I agree. And I, I think the, the, the nature of the, the townhomes to the north, actually, when I walked it, I, I perceived that to be more of about an eight-foot, uh, area in there. So I'm, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the fifteen foot. And actually, if you look at those lots on the, on the west side over there, those are going to look like those yards are going to be quite big back there. So in, in terms of what the, what that area will look like when it's all filled in, I think it's going to look not so cramped.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think the, the main issue for, um, the commission, and it may be a good thing to take some vote on today, would be, does a majority of the commissioners present support the four reductions or variations being requested? Because if, if you do, then, to bring this back for final action as a matter of working through some of the technical issues that we still have related to work with their design engineer on, if a majority of the commission does not support the, the variations, then we're looking at, at modifying this plan and coming back with something that might be substantially different. So for their benefit and for, uh, to know what to be working on to repackage this back for the, the plat and final action, I think it would be important to get an indication whether majority of the commissioners favor those variations as requested.
Why don't we just do an informal vote? If you're in favor of, can, can go with these variations?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I think that's where we are, Dean.
And I'm sure Mr. Householder will be in favor of sidewalks on Georgetown.
I'll, I'll, we'll compromise on that, yeah, yeah.
Be thinking about that.
What, what we will do then is, is the, uh, your, your formal action on this would be to, to postpone, um, formal approval of the PDD amendment and the replat until, uh, some of these technical issues are worked through with the, uh, the engineers that are working with the applicant. So we, we should have a actual formal motion to, to postpone consideration of this item until the, it's ready to be considered with the replat.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this item to a future date, but we're giving the developers some guidance here. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Anything else on this item? I hope not. Okay. Thank you for your participation. Item number three. Application number seven zero seven dash eighteen A filed by Cal Valley Engineering on behalf of D.L. Rogers Corporation requesting final site plan approval for a proposed Sonic Drive, Drive-In Restaurant on property legally described as lots one seventy-four and one seventy-six on Santa Fe Avenue and lots one seventy-three and one seventy-five on Seventh Street, plus a vacated alleyway in the original townsite of Salina, uh, Celine County, Kansas, also known as three-ten South Santa Fe. Dean?
The, uh, this comes back to you as a deferred submit on a site plan in, in November of two thousand and seven. Um, you considered a request to, to take the two lots on Seventh Street that were formerly zoned residential, to merge those with the Santa Fe lots, to create a, a single planned C-three district and to, uh, package together a site plan for an expanded, redeveloped Sonic Drive-In at this location. And, uh, the, what was available at the time was only conceptual and, uh, this site had the additional challenge of being bisected by a ten-foot platted alley. And, uh, we've given you plenty of background as to how we got to this point, but the final resolution was that, was that the, uh, the alley went, but the sewer stayed. And the, the plan would be to construct the building over the existing sewer line with the agreement that there would be a concrete sleeve, uh, used to encase the sewer line, uh, which would allow access to it if a building was placed over the top. So, uh, the initial action to vacate the alley and put that into D.L. Rogers' ownership, uh, was approved on August twenty-fifth by the city commission. So the, the request coming back to you now, uh, because this is a planned commercial district, is for final site plan approval. And the, uh, the Sonic that's in place there today has been there since nineteen seventy-three. Uh, there were some major cosmetic renovations in nineteen ninety-one. The plan now is to remove the existing restaurant and replace it with a new, uh, structure that would go back in its place. The new structure would be set back farther from Santa Fe than the existing one, uh, that's there today. But what we're looking at is a, a building footprint of close to eighteen hundred square feet. It would be, uh, varying between twenty-four and thirty feet wide and seventy-eight feet from east to west. Um, it would be oriented to face Santa Fe and there would be parking areas under canopy, but they would primarily be north and, and west of the building. The vehicle access would be primarily from Santa Fe, but there is a new two-way driveway proposed off of Seventh Street. Um, we kind of gave you a summary there that our, our building site's twenty-five thousand square feet. Only seven percent of that would be covered by building. About ninety percent would be covered by paving and drives, you know, leaving about three percent of it, which would be landscaped area or open space. So, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, the rear of the building facing Seventh Street. You've got a, a trash dumpster back in the northwest corner on the Seventh Street side because that really functions as a rear yard, even though it's a double frontage lot. Um, if you can visualize it, the building as proposed would be set back forty-five feet farther from Santa Fe than the building today. Um, there's also a plan to relocate the existing sign and move it. It's about at the front property line today. That would be shifted about twenty-four feet to the west. Um, the plan shows twenty-two parking spaces. Um, and then this is little unusual compared to what is there today in that it would offer both drive-through and drive-in service. So you would have the ability to park into the canopy and have drive-in service. So there's also a, a drive-through pickup window proposed as part of that. We have looked at total parking and we've looked at stacking spaces for the drive-in and drive-through. And all those requirements are met by this plan. Um, as far as the, the traffic and access itself, Santa Fe's an arterial street. Seventh Street is a local street. Um, in front of the hospital, Santa Fe carries between ten and eleven thousand vehicles per day. Um, we don't have any counts for Seventh Street. The existing Sonic does not have a, a driveway on, on Seventh Street. That is part of this proposal. Um, the utilities and drainage that are in place are adequate for the redevelopment plan. As we noted, it would be Sonic's responsibility to, to design and install the sleeve to encase that sewer line that they would like to, to build over. Um, the sign that's there today is, is twenty feet high and sixty square feet in area, has a three-by-eight electronic reader board. Um, in the C-three district, they could have a sign as, as tall as thirty feet. This particular one is twenty. Um, their existing signage and what they're proposing on their building would fit within the allotment they would have for that site and would actually be less. I think the, uh, the focus of the site plan and the site plan review is that, uh, if you were in the C-four district, which is to the north and downtown area, um, that area is exempt from any minimum landscape requirements. This is zone C-three and C-three is, is not. Um, with the amount of frontage we have on Santa Fe and our landscape ordinance based on width and depth of, of lot, about fifteen hundred square feet of landscaped area would be required along Santa Fe. Uh, the plan submitted by the applicant has five-hundred-and-fifty square feet along the Santa Fe, uh, frontage. And so our, our ratio along the front there would be twenty-two percent green space and seventy-eight percent, uh, paving within that front yard area. Um, part of this has to do with the fact that you've got two driveways within a fairly short hundred-foot frontage. And then you've also got the, uh, the circulation drive there at the front of the building, which separates the two green space areas. So I think the, uh, the primary issue as far as, as the landscape plan would be this, this lot has two front yards for landscaping purposes and, uh, there's very little provided on the Seventh Street side. I think our concern there on Seventh Street is, is not so much the, um, the actual quantity or, or what is there, as the fact that because of the way the site's laid out, you have about a two-hundred, two-and-a-half foot buffer strip there along the, uh, the west side, along Seventh, where those bushes are proposed. Two-and-a-half feet is, is very, uh, narrow to have a, a really viable planting bed that, that, uh, can hold up over time. Um, I think that's the primary concern, not, not the amount, but just the, the narrowness. How feasible is that to, to be viable and maintainable? And then we've got the trash enclosure, as mentioned, on that northwest corner. So again, the, uh, the planned commercial district, like a planned development district, is a, is a two-edged proposition. The, uh, a planned commercial district allows the planning commission to impose conditions on the site plan approval. It also allows an applicant to request deviations, um, from, uh, standards and requirements. And, uh, you have the authority to grant relief from strict application of the landscape regulations based on, uh, unique site conditions. Um, the, uh, the process, um, again, is that we review the site plan for compliance with city ordinances, regulations and policies. We've done that and the only, the only thing that varies here from the strict application of a, uh, local regulation is, is the front yard landscaping. Um, and then you review that and look at the site plan and how it relates to those regulations and, and policies. And you have the option of approving the plan or disapproving it as submitted, approving it subject to revisions or conditions, or asking that a plan be substantially revised and, and resubmitted. Just like we did in the last or previous case, we've, uh, itemized what we think are places where the, uh, there are variations being requested. And, uh, the, the citation there is, is in our landscape regulations. Obviously landscaping is not a life, safety or public safety issue. Um, so, um, there is some flexibility built into the ordinance where you've got topography or land ownership or site boundaries or dimensions or adjacent development characteristics or, uh, pre-existing conditions. Um, the zoning administrator or the planning commission can modify the strict provisions of those regulations as deemed appropriate. And I think the, uh, in addition to the somewhat tightness of this site, the other thing that's different about this area is that, yes, it's zone C-three, but it's in proximity to the, uh, the downtown area. And if you look at, and I don't know if you have an aerial photo, John, but the, uh, if you look at the Masonic Temple parking lot and you look at the, uh, the glass repair and you look at the Taco John's across the street, although some of this is zone C-three, it's, it's. at the Taco Johns across the street, although some of this is Zone C3, it's not really done in a C3 pattern like you would have out on South Ninth or South Ohio or some of those other areas. Most of these areas are extensively paved, and there's minimal green space in the surrounding areas. So, there's two ways to look at it. If you look at it from the purely C3 point of view, and look at this and compare it to a Taco Bueno, or a Popeyes, or something developed along those lines, the landscaping is substantially less. If you look at it from the standpoint of what land area they have to work with and the surrounding development pattern, then the landscaping is probably over, what they are proposing is probably over and above what is in the surrounding area. So, this comes to you with a request by the applicants for relief from the strict application of the front yard landscaping requirements, and those are itemized there. And I know there's representatives for Sonic here, so I think I'll take questions about any other aspect of the staff report, and then maybe we can hear from Sonic's representatives.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Is there a reason why that back, well, the Seventh Street side, the landscaping, if it were widened or made deeper, I'm not sure which, instead of 2 and 1/2 feet, it was 3 and 1/2 feet or whatever, then the problem, is there a problem with the traffic flow? Is there, is that just at the minimum that it has to be?
I believe that we raised that issue early on and looked to see is there any accommodation. The only alternative in a case like this, and it's not the ideal condition, if you can't achieve the buffer on private property because of tight conditions, there have been a few cases where landscaping has been moved or relocated, so to speak, to where trees or enhancements in the right-of-way, meaning between the property line and the street, are allowed to substitute for what is on private property. But the issue here is the fact that you must accommodate three things based on this plan. You've got to have an inner ring roadway for the drive-through windows. So, you're going to have a, you've got, you're accommodating traffic here for the drive-through. You've got accommodating traffic to go around that, and then you have to have sufficient depth here, and that's going to be primarily employee parking. So, to get the dimensions for the parking and the backing space for the parking, to have an aisle width for the drive-through traffic, and to allow cars to circulate without being in the drive-through, that's where there was not really any give in the plan. There's not, you can't really narrow those dimensions and make it work for vehicle circulation. And that's, there was quite a bit of effort by Sonic's engineers to look at whether there could be any space gained, because even if you could take the 2 and 1/2 feet and make it 5, that would make that strip there a little more viable as a planting strip than 2 and 1/2 feet. But that was looked at. It was raised by us, and we asked their engineers to look at it, and there just, there wasn't anything that you could really adjust in there and keep this vehicle circulation the way it needed to be.
Except making the building shorter.
Except making the building shorter. But there's, from an operational standpoint, there's a reason for everything, the way it is located on the plan, and that would best be addressed by Sonic representatives. But we looked at that and made efforts to, as a staff, to see if there was space that we could gain in there to get that buffer to be slightly wider, so it was more viable.
You know, a small row of bushes in a strip like that, generally don't do well. They're trash collectors. I guess I'd be in favor of paving that area and put some trees in the space between the sidewalk and the back of the curb. You said that sometimes that's done.
In the easement area.
In the easement area.
Right. Because there is more, it's, the engineers always frown at us when we talk about putting trees in the right-of-way, but the...
Well, is there a sewer line in there, something that would prohibit the placement of, let's say, some halfway decent-sized trees in there? Maybe two or three?
Not on Seventh Street.
At all, John, is there?
The sewer here is in the alley.
Storm sewer.
Well, the sewer, we know where, yeah.
Yeah, but is there any storm sewer in there?
So, really, that wouldn't be an issue if we did allow them to probably build there. Nothing in the foreseeable future. Might be smarter.
More trees.
Mm-hmm. And this is really kind of like an infill issue. We're dealing with an old lot that's trying to be redeveloped, and we're kind of running into the same issues.
Well, I noticed just to the, on this one drawing, there's, towards the left-hand side of the drawing, there is an existing tree already.
Well, I said it, there's two ways to look at this, and one way is to look at from the standpoint that the parking for the Masonic Temple, the paving goes property line to property line, and so that's not going to be the case here.
Well, what is it showing here for the trash bin? Is that, they're showing paving there between the sidewalk and the edge of the trash bin? Huh?
That's probably concrete.
Yeah, I think that's going to be part of the pad for the trash enclosure.
Any other questions of Dean? Comments? Hearing none, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Would you give us your name and address?
My name's Denny Powell. I live at 1302 Highland Circle here in Salina, Kansas. I represent the D.L. Rogers Corporation, which is Sonic Drive-In. I have Call Valley here also, our engineer, so if there's anything I can't answer, I'm sure he can.
Any questions of the developer?
Under utilities, there was the comment for the sanitary sewer. This line is relatively flat and is not in good condition. So, we're putting a concrete sleeve around something that's not in good condition, or...
Who's going to do that? Who's responsible for that?
Oh, we are. I believe we are. Is that right, John?
Yes, that would be done by Sonic as part of the project. The not being in great condition part is one of the reasons why the utilities director recommended that the line just be left in place. There are all kinds of options looked at. Can we take the sewer that comes out of the Masonic Temple and direct it somewhere else? And there was not a good solution. So, the best solution was to leave the sewer in place as it is, and if you put a sleeve around the sewer pipe, then if there's a need to access underneath the building, you can slide the pipe out to get at it as opposed to having to excavate. And so, that's the rationale for that. So, the best, the section that would be in the best condition would be the portion that's being addressed with the sleeve and all here.
A sleeve and a new pipe in that particular section?
Are they not proposing a new pipe?
I believe it's just...
Yes.
That section would be a new pipe with the sleeve built around it.
All right. That covers it.
To a customer's standpoint, what's the advantage of drive-through as opposed to drive-in?
In the public's eye, the drive-through is a lot faster than...
Is it actually faster?
You know, my honest opinion, it is not.
Right.
But in the public's eye, it is. People don't want to wait. They don't want to pull up. They just want to keep moving.
I use the Sonic drive-throughs. I just used one in Grand Island the other day, and I love it.
We, most of our stores now that we are billing have drive-throughs on them.
And I'm a little concerned about these LED borders and accent lighting. Are these flashing things?
On which ones? Now, the existing sign?
No, that are coming around your canopy.
No, no. They're LED lights or just like a light bulb.
Okay.
They're covered actually with a plastic...
High-efficiency bulb is what it is.
Yes. If you go out south, right here, this is our one store on Ninth Street. This is what we're looking at doing.
You know, we're kind of opposed to those flashing things.
Don't say we are. Well, the flashers, I am against the flashers. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm kind of interested in the agreement between the city and the developer here regarding that sewer line. Is there some formal agreement that's signed, a contract? How's that all worked out?
I'll let our engineer talk about it.
Do you want to address that, Dean?
Well, there was a resolution that was adopted by the City Commission. We have an ordinance that prohibits the construction of any building over a utility easement without City Commission authorization. So, they had a resolution that required that the design for the encasement and all be done to the specifications and approval of the utilities director, and so that work will be done under her supervision. And so, it spelled out that it's Sonic's obligation to come up with a design acceptable to the city and then install that subject to city inspection.
Well, that's an interesting way of handling this, and I just kind of interested in some...
Yeah, it will be inspected by our city engineering staff.
Will there be a manhole on each end of that for access to that sleeve?
I wouldn't think so. There will not.
Will not?
No.
Just what is in place currently.
There are two manholes, one upstream and downstream of this, but not in the, not actually where the sleeve's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah. That was, one of the key components of the design here was to have the encased portion of the line extend beyond the confines of the roof line of the building itself, so that if needed, utilities personnel would be able to get in and excavate.
But you'd certainly disrupt the traffic flow if you had to excavate here.
There goes that drive-through.
That is true.
I guess I was going to say, I'm surprised the sleeve wouldn't extend from one edge of the lot to the other edge of the lot, as opposed to just under the building.
Well, I think that's probably why you put the new pipe in. You're hoping that doesn't happen for 50 years, I'm guessing, yeah.
That's true.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
There was, did you guys give consideration about maybe squeezing 30 inches out of that front play section to give it more space in back?
Well, there's no play section in there. It's a patio. We've had a lot of customers right up there and right in front of the building. It's actually a patio. There's no play area there.
But that can be shortened by 30 inches to a lot more in the rear.
Well, we had, we've had a lot of customers from the hospital and from Security Savings and Masonic Temple that request places to sit. So, that's why we even put it in there.
Yeah, makes sense.
You know, we have a lot of people that drive up, and they say, well, you know, we walk from, around there, we sure like a place to sit.
There will be seating inside?
No, not inside.
Oh, I thought it said...
Not inside?
No, not inside the building. No.
Well, I thought it said...
There's a little patio right there in front. It's got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, like about nine tables there. It is not inside the building. It's over a, it's underneath a awning.
I just thought I read that there was...
We may have referred to that inappropriately as indoor seating, but in terms of the parking, we recognize that there'll be drive-in, drive-through, and there will be the ability to have sit-down service, but we may have inappropriately described that as indoor.
All right, just...
Now, where do they park if they want to sit at one of those tables? Do they use one of the regular parking spaces?
We have a lot of our customers, I mean, if they don't walk up and they want to get out of their cars, they actually park in our stalls.
Park in the stall, but eat at a table?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Anything else? Are we ready to act on this?
Did you ask the public? Did you ask any more of the public?
Is there any one from the public that would like to talk? This isn't a public hearing, but you're still invited to talk. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the bench and see if we can take some action.
How do we go about authorizing the tree planting in the docks area?
Well, I think, I think the question would be whether you would want to have something, in other words, whether you want something to supplement what's being proposed along Seventh Street, or whether, I think I heard Mr. Funk recommend that it be eliminated altogether on the private side, and that a, that plantings be proposed on the public space between the property line and curb line of Seventh Street. So, I guess the idea would be rather than item three there, the request to reduce the required parking lot buffer from 5 feet to 2 and 1/2 feet, you would be basically authorizing the elimination of that and the substitution of right-of-way plantings to make up for that. And I think what we would be looking at, if we were looking at right-of-way plantings, we'd probably be looking at a couple of trees as opposed to, you know, the line of bushes. The bushes don't work well out in the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street, but if you had, if you substituted two trees for the shrubbery buffer along Seventh Street in the right-of-way, that would be appropriate.
The developer is nodding in the affirmative for the record. He'd accept that?
Because I, I just believe, and we believe, that maintaining that 2 and 1/2-foot strip as viable landscape area, that's going to be a struggle.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it'd be a maintenance issue for everybody.
Yep. Okay, with that clarification, do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve application ZO7-18A with the four variations and exceptions, except that number three to read a request to eliminate the required parking lot buffer along Seventh Street from 5, I'm sorry, to eliminate the parking lot buffer along Seventh Street and substitute right-of-way planning.
I'd second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That takes care of item three. Collection of officers. We had to dismiss Mrs. Jarnovich, and so here we are, in trouble.
Yeah, we are in our mode where we are, we are on a September to September schedule. Terms for the planning commission are August 31 to August 31, and recently Commissioners Soderbergh and Ritter were reappointed. Prior to that, Mr. Appleby and Mr. Mikeso were reappointed, and Mr. Householder was appointed to succeed Jerry Simpson at last... appointed to succeed Jerry Simpson at last year's appointment time. The prior year's chairman, of course, was Mrs. Jarnovich. She completed her two terms on the planning commission, was not eligible to be reappointed. So, everybody who's currently sitting on the commission today has been on the commission for a year, and they would be eligible for the position of chairman. Mr. Funk has served a full term as vice chairman, he could be re-elected for that position, and then all other members are eligible for vice chairman as well. I pointed out our, the dilemma with Mr. Appleby, who's currently undergoing some medical treatment, he has been unable to attend either the commission or Board of Zoning Appeals meetings, but he is your current representative or liaison to the BZA, and then Mrs. Soderbergh is currently serving as the Heritage Commission representative. So, in order of things, we should probably entertain nominations for the position of chairman for the upcoming year, and then following that, nominations for vice chairman, and then look for volunteers for those other two positions. Where we sit now is that with nine members, seven are to be city residents, and two are to be those who live outside but within three miles of the city. Margaret filled one of those spots, and I think the, the city is receiving expression of interest forms for people who live within three miles of the city for that ninth position. But at this time, we should go ahead and open it up for nominations for chairman for the coming year.
I would move, oh, do you have a suggestion?
I was going to say, if Monroe loves this position, by gosh.
I move that we nominate as chairperson.
Yeah. Chairperson, well, I would second, I would second that.
Do we have any additional nominations?
Sound of crickets.
So, all those who would favor Mr. Funk serving as chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That seems to pass unanimously, so I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to our new chairman and let him accept nominations for vice chairman.
Well, I guess I thank you for your confidence. I'll try my best, I'll try and make most of the meetings, but we do like to go southwest for this winter. So, but I'll try my best. So, nominations are open for vice chairman, to serve for the next year.
I'd nominate Patrick Miccel.
Second that?
Got one nomination, how about another? Okay, nominations are closed, we have a nomination here in Patrick. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
Mr. Funk better keep Mr. Miccel informed of his travel schedule.
Yeah, that's true. Your secretary faxed me that.
And the other thing you have to promise is to keep us out of digital signs. Now, we need to make some selections for representatives to, first of all, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then the Heritage Commission. You'd be a good person for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I agree with that. He's willing.
When do they meet? How often do they meet?
They meet once a month, and they meet on the third Thursday of each month. So, oftentimes, when, say, we're meeting this Thursday, so...
What time of day do they meet?
Same time, same room.
Okay.
But the, usually when the planning commission meets on the third Tuesday, and then that will be followed up by a BZA on the third Thursday. So, a lot of times, there'll be both meetings in a week.
That happens very seldom. Some months, they do not meet, there's been occasion. I served on that one year. That was very interesting, very interesting. In fact, some of the decisions are more difficult there than they are on this bench, because they're trying to do something that they really shouldn't be doing. Accept that, Wayne?
Sure.
The rest of you in favor?
Absolutely.
Wayne, you're it. Heritage Commission, Mrs. Soderbergh has been on that the last year, and I would hope she'd maybe do that again.
I don't mind doing that, for some reason, I've had a couple, they don't meet that often, and a couple of times, I've just been out of town when they've met, and I, it's a small board, and I don't like when that happens. So, if somebody else feels like they're more available, Aaron, you'd be great on that, too.
Well, I'd love to be on it, but maybe not, maybe not this early. I mean, if you don't want to do it, I'd love to do it.
Could we have an alternate?
Let's let, let's let him do it.
Okay.
Yeah, if he may be more available.
Their scheduled meetings are four times a year, but...
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, not very often.
Perfect for me.
As, as cases come up, for instance, the Sonic case, because it was in the vicinity of the Masonic Temple, was reviewed by the Heritage Commission, so that's, that's a case where you'd have a special meeting, but the regular meeting schedule is four times a year.
They can, they can try and twist my arm on the sign issues.
Is there a lengthy agenda, or...
No, 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 not like this.
Do they serve food?
They don't serve food either.
Dang, what about drinks?
Fire fountain?
And where do they meet?
They meet in here at four o'clock, and it's always a Wednesday afternoon.
Okay. That'd be great. If you don't want to do it, I think you're good on it. Okay, I'll do it.
Aaron is our designee. Anything else we need to do?
Not in terms of formal action tonight. We will have a meeting on the seventh, and we are working with the Tree Advisory Board again, and we'll be looking to make a joint, they've got a couple nominees where we'll be looking to make some awards for outstanding landscaping projects in the community on the seventh. We have a conditional use permit filed, the Stiefel Theaters in the C4 district, and they've had temporary liquor licenses for certain events and things, and they want to permanent, make that a permanent license, and because in the state's view, that makes them a drinking establishment, they would essentially have the same license as anyone else, so they will be applying for a conditional use permit to allow that on a year-round basis. And then we have a, the Cornerstone Development, Grand Prairie Edition, which is adjacent to the golf course off of Cedar Ridge Drive, they're wanting to come back with their final plat arrangement. The only thing that's notable on that was that they originally had a plan to put their detention on the golf course and have a shared punting arrangement, and that, that has gone by the wayside, and now they'll be detaining on their own property and not on the golf course. And then we had a application filed that would re-subdivide or further subdivide the lot at the northeast corner of Cloud and Ohio into some individual building lots, the vacant tract there, and those, those items are all scheduled at this time for the seventh.
And then the comprehensive planning meeting?
Yes, and then you've got a handout there about, so we're not going to want that to run too long.
Yes, Mr. Funk.
Because then we will have the, the meetings in the evening there, and then we also had some handouts there about other, other meetings that are forthcoming in October, one of which is a overall just development forum that deals with the development issues in the community. It could be anything ranging from sidewalks to construction codes, but because you do deal with the reviewing development, we wanted to make you aware of that. You've got a schedule there that shows all the various, some of you are involved in more than one thing in the comprehensive plan, so it gives you the schedule of the various meetings, but the, there will be a special meeting in the, in the room next door here, that will be a joint meeting between you and the city commission, together with Gould Evans, and that will be the same evening as your regular scheduled meeting. So, we'll, we'll try to get you an intermission there, so you can have dinner and come back.
Or you could provide dinner.
Yes, or we could figure out a way to cater in, and then you wouldn't have to leave.
We'll go to Sonic and get some drive-throughs.
That's right, they'll be closed, they'll be, they'll be working.
If we get their drive-through window open by then, we can bring something back.
One of the past secretaries, you know, baked cookies for us.
That's right. Oh, my favorite, that and banana bread, she's in.
Anything else need to come before the...
Now, you have those upcoming meetings to please take note of, and we will have a pretty good agenda on the seventh.
No, no.
I understand you, Paul.